Veterans Affairs and Procurement calls this confirmation and public hearing to order. It is now three minutes after five on Tuesday, July 19, 2006. I'll just make an announcement at the beginning here. We were also supposed to hear Bill Number 342-33, which had to do with the automated traffic enforcement. We're postponing that hearing tonight, so if anybody is here for that, that will be rescheduled for another time. Introduction of -- with me today is -- to my right is Senator Frank Uggan. Thank you very much, Senator. To my left is Senator Tina Munya Barnes, and to her left is Senator Tommy Morrison. Thank you, gentlemen, and ma'am, for joining us tonight. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Mr. James T. McDonnell to serve as the Director of the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. We will also be hearing Bill Number 333-33, introduced by Senator Frank B. Uggan Jr. and myself, and it's an act to add to the Guam Code Annotated to require the -- relative to the voluntary placement of a distinguishing mark for Guam veterans on the driver's licenses and the Guam Identification Card, and also a public hearing on Bill Number 334, introduced by myself and Senator Frank Uggan. Myself, Senator Frank Uggan, and Senator Tina Munya Barnes. It's an act to add a new section to Guam Code Annotated relative to appropriating the sum of $3,000 relative to the special recognition veterans license plates. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on July 12 and on July 15, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so for those of you who will be giving testimony tonight, please make sure that you speak clearly into the microphone and -- and -- yeah, clearly, so that those who are watching at home will be able to listen. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM on Tuesday, July 26. Please address the testimony to Senator Thomas Ciada, Chairperson of the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement, and can be dropped to the mailbox here at the Legislature or emailed to my office. And so we'll start first with the public -- with a confirmation hearing on the executive appointment of Mr. James T. McDonnell. Now, the way this will work is that we will -- we will start off by receiving testimony for those who are here to give testimony on behalf of Chief McDonnell. And normally, we would go down in the order of signatures, but I'm going to go ahead and in deference to Governor Cal Quinteros, I'm going to ask him to -- I'm going to put him at the top and ask him to come forth to be part of the first group. And then, in the following order, is Ralph Scambiluri, Vincent Perez, Allison Augustine, and Jake Cruz. So for those who are given testimony, there's a number of people here who have signed up, and I ask that you please keep your testimony short, so that we'll have a lot of time to listen to the man of the hour, Chief James McDonnell. So with that, Governor Quinteros.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I have provided written testimony and had given it to the staff of this committee, but I would just like to summarize that I'm here in support, in favor of the confirmation of Jim McDonnell as the Director of Customs and Quarantine Agency. I have known Mr. McDonnell and, of course, the entire clan, propaganda heights, and during the time that I've known him, I have interacted with him while he was not only working in the Legislature for Republican Eddie Duñez, and also, you can tell that our ideology did not keep us prisoners from each other. We're here because I think that he merits the confirmation. But during the period of time that I had been in the Legislature, he was very prominent while he was an officer of the Customs, come down and lobby with us, Senator Ben Fangillian, the late Senator Fangillian, myself, Eddie Duñez, and Joe Son Augustine, about separating the agency, because it made sense, and, of course, we did that. But more particularly, when I was governor, I had the honor of appointing him as Acting Director for two years. We all know, Mr. Chairman, that the agency has been hit quite hard over the last several years of some misdeeds, and I believe that the presence of Jimmy over the next few years as he takes the helm, I think is going to be a turnaround of the image of the Customs and Quarantine. So with that being said, I am here totally in favor that he would make a good director and that he would be a positive contributor to the image of the Customs and Quarantine Agency.
Thank you very much, Governor. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Chief Scambiluri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope my statement today holds water for the confirmation for -- I'll call him, if it's possible, Jim, if I could call you Jim, Jimmy, instead of James. I know him very closely as Jim McDonnell. I've known Jimmy since I was 11 years old. I went through six governors, and one of the governors next to me is Governor Quinteros. He was -- I was under his command when he was the governor. Went through 13 directors, went through three chiefs, and I am now retired. Senator, my name is Ralph Scambiluri, the recent retired chief of Customs and Quarantine. Thank you for the opportunity to present this written testimony in support of the confirmation of James McDonnell as the Director of the Agency of Customs and Quarantine. I have known and worked with Mr. McDonnell since I was 11 years old, as we were not only classmates, but teammates on various sports teams, and coworkers at the agency. Our family has been closely tied for decades, and thus, if there is someone who understands the work ethics and the complexity, Mr. McDonnell then would be -- would -- I'm sorry, then that would be myself. There isn't more -- there isn't a more qualified and capable individual who can continue the work, uphold the intent of the Customs, while maintaining the agency that I have proudly associated with for over 31 years. Mr. McDonnell has proudly worn the uniform at the CQA for a number of years, understanding the objectives of the agency, has the respect of the employees of the organization, and is committed to the pledge he recited when he swore to protect our borders the day he became a Customs Officer. With this in mind, I would urge the members of this esteemed body to support the confirmation of Mr. McDonnell as the next Director of Customs and Quarantine. I just want to clarify that Jim, my good friend, for so long has been a childhood friend. Now, just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, the Director is the Director. The chief is under the Director, and there's only one chief in the agency, which is vacant right now. So this is a very critical time for the agency to confirm Mr. McDonnell, because the agency is lacking a chief right now. And if we go further on, and maybe there's some clarification, because there's some instability, like the governor said, regards to -- I went through six directors -- I'm sorry, five directors in a period of 12 years. And how does Mr. McDonnell now come in, you know, it's going to be very hard for him, and I know he's going to complete the mission, but the two years that he has is a daunting task for him, because it's like a revolving door for an agency. Five directors, if in my terms, the chief of customs. You know, it's very hard for me also to have some stability in the agency when you have a director come in and change everything around and go forward within his direction. So I have something, maybe there's some thought that the senators could go through, and maybe it would be a backlash regards to what I'm going to say right now, but maybe you could think about it, and I think maybe the governor will probably have some support in this. There isn't a more -- okay, I'm sorry. In 1968, the Congress passed the Anubis Crime Control and Safe Street Act, which set the term limit of the FBI director for 10 years. This was created in the reaction of the extraordinary 48-year term of former director J. Edgar Hoover. While many can confirm, confirmably state that the department may accomplish during this almost five-decade tenure, some in Congress were also apprehensive of the political pressures that someone in this capacity can endure when dealing with the nation's safety. The intent of passing this law was to safeguard against improper influence and abuse. They felt that the director should not necessarily be working at the pleasure of the president. The position is about entrustment and public guardianship, and should not be one of influence. There is no place for politics when it comes to public safety and stability, and any public safety organization should be the utmost priority. The Director of Customs, as with the chief of police and the fire, should not enter not enter their entire day in office with uncertainty of potential strains or timelines of where -- when patrons may affect their tenure. With this in mind, it is recommended the lawmakers amend subsection 3127 of Chapter 3, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, to establish a six-year term limit for the agency or the Director of Customs and all the law enforcement agencies, like the Police Department and also the Fire Department. At least, it gives that individual that is appointed has enough time to work within his men and women in the agency. A four-year term is not enough. If he's not doing a good job, then the governor should remove him for the Legislature Code Oversight hearing to see what's going on. But a four-year term for anyone to be the director, I think it should be extended within those categories of the field of law enforcement. I'd like to thank the chairman of the committee, members of the committee, and all the courses with the members of the 33rd Guam Legislature for the company to present my testimony today. As indicated, I urge this august body to support the confirmation of Mr. McDonnell, so he can work diligently in leading the agency and assure that our people and our voters are safe. He is a qualified nominee, an accomplished leader, an experienced representative of the Public Safety Committee, and a great person and a friend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Scambiluri. Next is Major Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, honorable senators. My name is Vincent Perez. I am the Assistant Chief of Customs. I work as the Division Chief of the Inspection and Control Division, overseeing all the ports of entry into Guam. I've been with Customs for over 27 years and have seen tremendous building of capacity and growth, and know that where we are right now is not where we should be. During the '90s, the agency experienced positive growth and strategic direction. Guam Customs had a full contingent of dedicated officers and support staff with properly working equipment, computers, software, working hard to effectively and efficiently carry out the mission of the agency. The role of the director is to work within the means at his disposal to move practically and strategically to enhance and improve the agency. In the 1990s, Guam Customs had a law enforcement presence of over 220 customs officers, who were always immediately seen and recognized, prominent at our borders, 24/7 operations at the airport, Anderson Air Force Base. They were seen also at 8:00 to 5:00 during the air cargo operations, post office, and maritime operations. As of today, we have lost over 46%, down to roughly 120 officers. Many officers have left the agency because of pay and retention issues. Why working Guam Customs when you can practically double your salary working for the feds doing the same type of job? Now imagine this, over a million people crossing our border annually while our customs officers search for the needle in the haystack. Now imagine having to search for that needle in numerous haystacks for a myriad of prohibited, restricted agricultural products, narcotics, or consumer products. Now imagine doing this with 40% -- 46% reduction in force, day in and day out, 365 days a year. Imagine using outdated or obsolete equipment, vehicles, technology, et cetera. Compounding this are pay inequities that exist between law enforcement entities that have yet to be addressed today. Many of the hard-working officers are trying their best, while others have resorted to unscrupulous means to get by. In the past year, several officers have been indicted and are currently awaiting sentences in their roles in a smuggling conspiracy. This is the situation with Guam Customs. We need an experienced and skillful director to get strategically out of the rut we are currently in. The agency needs dynamic and strong leadership to bring us where we need to be. Since the departure of our previous director and the retirement of our chief, a void has developed which needs to be filled. I am here today to provide my support in nomination of Mr. James McDonnell as the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency Director. I have known Mr. McDonnell since 1989, when I was an office inspector, working the inspection counters at the airport. During that time, he was always willing to provide guidance to ensure that people, merchandise, foodstuffs, et cetera, are properly inspected and handled accordingly. Because of his knowledge and experience, he rose to the rank of Assistant Chief and retired after a long and honorable career. He has a wide perspective, coming up from the ranks of the agency, and instead of complaining about things that we cannot change, his view is to find out how the situation in which the agency finds itself today can be improved. With his varied experience, Mr. McDonnell brings to the agency a fresh perspective on issues and challenges facing the agency. He has experience with homeland security, civil defense initiatives, which will help build capacity and strengthen our mission and enhance our capabilities. Mr. McDonnell takes a proactive can and will-do approach. I am faithful that Mr. McDonnell is what Customs needs in order to strategically arrive where we should be, as the premier law enforcement entity protecting our borders and frontlines with integrity, service, and honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Major Perez. Jake Cruz? Mr. Son Augustine, you signed up. Did you want to testify? You were next on line. I'm sorry, Jake. Mr. Son Augustine was before you.
My name is Allison Augustine, of Somoro Tribe. I'm testifying on a gentleman here, and I'm pretty sure that I don't need to repeat myself over. These gentlemen's here have said everything about what I wanted to say, so I think I'll just be short and direct. As this person behind me, Mr. McDonnell, I've known him for quite a few decades. I find him as a very compassionate person, and I look at him as a very unique person. As I sit and I listen to the needs where he's going to be at as a director, a director can't be a director unless you give him the right infrastructure to make it possible. And I believe that Mr. McDonnell, that person, can work with those and working with the Legislature to get that infrastructure, I'm pretty sure that he can do his job very defined. And I look at the custom as -- customs should be a very unique, elite, and defined place to work at, as it really is a very, very important as to our island that comes in in the future, as we have a lot of problems that's happening right now. We need a gentleman right here to work with the Legislature, for you to give him the right, proper infrastructure for that to happen. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Son Augustine. Mr. Cruz?
I come here today to offer testimony in favor of Mr. James T. McDonnell, according to the Customs and Quarantine Director. I know James McDonnell both personally and professionally for nearly 33 years, since his humble beginnings of being a customs officer and rising up to the lands of nature, then ultimately being appointed by then the Honorable Carl "Titanic" Cruz Quinteros, the Governor of Guam, back in 1994 and 1998. And, I don't know, as the Director of Customs, I want to thank the Honorable Governor Eddie Barza-Cavall and Lieutenant Governor Ray Tenoyal for having faith and trust in Mr. McDonnell in bringing that the agency, Customs and Quarantine, back to basics. Mr. McDonnell will get things done to ensure that our ports of entry are not compromised. At the same time, he will bring the same teachings his parents had taught him to be respectful, and more so, be compassionate to whatever he does. And he will bring the morale of customs up. I'm not saying that the morale is down, but he will recognize individuals and applaud them for their efforts. He has also demonstrated a hand-to attitude and the willingness to improvise and make things happen, even with the limited resources the government of Guam provides. He goes out to the individuals within the community and brings them to their as corners with whatever agency he is. Most notably, during his recent tenure as the Deputy Director of the Bureau of Statistic and Plans, he has brought his compassion, willingness, and willingness to learn about the different grants that the Bureau of Statistic and Plans manage for the government of Guam. Under his leadership, under the leadership of Will Hasser, the current Director of the Bureau of Statistic and Plans, Mr. McDonnell, and Mr. Don McDonnell, then, the Deputy Director of the Bureau of Statistic and Plans, has showed and demonstrated this passion until early June, and it's -- they have demonstrated the holiday and welcome to all the visitors that head in from the Florida Festival of History Arts, mainly the Waukesha and Fortuna Dedication, and many, many other dedications. At the end of the two-week period, everyone on Guam was silent. It was like there was some kind of entire death in this island, because all the dedications were leaving, and the commodities that we all had with them were very close, like they were hot, hot handies. Now, no more -- Senator Tom Attit, I humbly seek your support, along with your committee. Once the confirmation is completed and after hearing overwhelming testimony today, in favor of Mr. James T. McDonnell, I humbly ask that your office could immediately hail the committee of court. And it's kind of too late to do it for the Wednesday session, July 20 session, but on the next regular legislative session, face it on the [unintelligible] aisle, at the next session, regular session, and voting favor of the Honorable James T. McDonnell as the Director of Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. He is the best choice and best individual to fulfill the missions and the objective of protecting our ports of entry, particularly the Antonio Borja One, Head Guam International Air Corps, the [unintelligible] Guam, he and the ports of entry. He will be a champion in bringing commodities and bringing the morale up and looking out for the best interests of the agency and his entire style. With that, Senator Tom Attit, and members of your committee, Senator Frank Uggan Jr., Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Michael Henn, Senator Tommy Morrison from Yuma Lake. I'd like to end with this note. I'd like to end with this note. James T. McDonnell can move, I believe, can move this agency, Customs and Quarantine, in the right direction, because why? He's still the one.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Unless anybody has questions from this panel, I'm going to go ahead and dismiss this panel. Thank you very much. Next on the sign-up list is Mr. Fernando Estevez, Philip Tyron, Paul Tovis, Ken Napolte. Okay, Fernando Estevez, Philip Tyron, Paul Tovis, Ken Napolte. All right, I'm going to check those off. Duane S. Nicholas, Nick Francisco. Darlene Marfallin. And the last one on the list is Fred Bredaglio, so we can just pull a seat, get a -- okay, so we'll start with Major Tyron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Senators, uh, Mr. Chairman, of course, and, uh, Acting Director McDonald, fellow Customs Officers and all of this present. I'm Major Philip San Nicholas Tyron Jr. I'm Assistant Chief of the Customs and Quarantine Agency. I've been, uh, with the agency for over 27 years. I'm here this evening to provide oral and written testimony in support of the confirmation of Mr. James T. McDonald, for the position of the Director of the Customs and Quarantine Agency. Jim is not new to our agency or the work that we perform at the border. He worked alongside us for 23, 23 years, up until the point of his retirement from the Customs Agency. A strong passion for government service drives this individual. This is apparent from the numerous leadership positions he has most recently held. He was the Guam Homeland Security Advisor, Office of Civil Defense Administrator, Marianas Regional Fusion Center Director, and the Deputy Director for the Bureau Statistics and Plans. Today, Jim seeks confirmation from this honorable body of legislators for confirmation as the Director of the Customs and Quarantine Agency. And I ask that you confirm him and give him the opportunity to continue the momentum of positive change that is already initiated in his short time as our Acting Director. A good leader does not wait until they are confirmed by this body to start spinning the flywheel of positive change. Jim came on board early June, and performed what any good leader does. He observed, oriented himself, made a bunch of important decisions, enacted. I made the decision to, to testify on Jim's behalf, after witnessing firsthand Jim's decisiveness on important organizational matters. He recognizes immediately the need for decisions on make-or-break issues, and he takes action. In a short time, Jim initiated the following. Frequent field visits to all border inspection workstations, specialized fieldwork areas, and administrative support offices. Jim directed the gathering of time and service data for all Customs Officer Ones, and ordered the development of a plan to promote all eligible CQ Ones, once he has identified the funding. He reinvigorated the agency awards and recognition program, and by week's end, we should recognize and award our outstanding employees. Jim also directed the development of an ethics training, and is finalizing the establishment and publication of our organization's core values. He successfully coordinated the introduction of statute that provided for the hazardous duty pay differential for CQA employees engaged in unavoidable hazardous duty conditions that is representative in Bill 351-33. He directed the immediate assessment of Customs Officer Personnel allocations to reallocate Customs Officer assignments to border inspection workstations experiencing officer shortages. Jim directed our biosecurity task force to enhance efforts to ensure the protection of our community and farmers from invasive pests and agroterrorism, and to expand our agriculture security intelligence alerts to include the business and trade stakeholders engaged in import or export activities in order to bring our biosecurity efforts full circle. He also initiated the dialogue necessary to set in motion efforts to investigate Guam security, Guam food security programs. He also directed the development of a plan to collect cost recovery charges from all transiting passengers who use Guam Customs Services. This is an outstanding issue and has resulted in a conservative estimate of $3 million in lost revenue to the government of Guam. He also directed the completion of the development of a 21-year drug seizure report and five-year Guam Customs Contraband Seizure Report to perform data analysis and qualify observations of border porousness and vulnerability to smuggling, transnational crime, revenue losses, and terrorism. He directed the continuous efforts of the contraband enforcement team's pursuit to officially establish the Office of Intelligence. This office is vital to contraband smuggling, intelligence sharing, as well as other high-end internal intelligence products. Jim directed the focus of Customs Officers and employees, and emphasized the return to increased vigilance and attention to indicators of transnational terrorism, agroterrorism, and homegrown terrorism. Jim directed the commencement of research to determine the potential for Guam's overburdened law enforcement team to avail itself, to avail itself of high of funding. A high-intensity drug trafficking area designation provides federal funding and federal personnel to support and mitigate high drug trafficking areas. He also directed our K-9 leadership to develop a plan to initiate training and acquisition of detector dogs to expand our security layer at the border to include Guam Customs explosive dogs to be used in our commercial port operations area. Jim also directed us to move forward with the acquisition and training of currency dogs, in order to detect bulk cash smuggling to further disrupt the financial conduits supplying and fueling our drug problem. Jim also urged our management team to investigate the availability of Department of Homeland Security grants to construct the Customs House headquarters and the accompanying support facilities. Last but not least, Jim continuously expresses his concerns about the increasing costs Guam import-export industry is exposed to. Jim brought to light the impact of financial burden Guam Customs imposes on the business and trade industry, allowing highly compensated officers of the Customs Agency to participate in off-duty service charges. The current Acting Chief and some Assistant Chiefs charge their high rates to importers and customers who use the service. As an Assistant Chief, I do not engage in this activity. In alignment with the concerns of our Acting Director, I support the enactment of statutory amendments to remove Acting Chiefs and Assistant Chiefs from performing off-duty services. Through this amendment of statute, our import, our import industry would be better served. Considering these immediate directives and the constant reinforcement on terrorism, supporting Jim is our director is the right thing to do, and propels us in the right direction. It looks like it's going to be an exciting time, and a chance to market this era of Customs, even as premature as I may be accused, as an era of Guam Customs Renaissance. Please confirm Jim McDonald as the Director for the Customs and Quarantine Agency. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Senators, for your time.
Thank you very much, uh, Major Tyron. I have next, Duane San Nicholas.
I, I've been practicing this speech all day, please forgive me, have I accidentally say Ronald McDonald, or? Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of this committee. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to give testimony in support of Mr. James McDonald. I want to be brief as possible to allow others to testify and perhaps entertain any questions you may have. 21 years ago, as a young officer, Mr. McDonald was my supervisor at the port office. His easygoing personality and leadership skills left an indelible mark. As a matter of fact, these skills and traits are something that I have held on and use very often. If you do not already know, Guam Customs faces many challenges, one of which is a shortage of manpower at all our ports of entry. We need a leader who could work with the front office and with you to muddle through these concerns. I believe Mr. McDonald is our man, and I have full faith in his ability to do so. Therefore, I offer this testimony in, in his support. Thank you, Sir Dusmasi.
Thank you very much, Mr. San Nicholas, Nick. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senator Uggun, Senator Barnes, Senator Morrison, good afternoon. I'm here this afternoon to testify verbal in favor and support of the confirmation of James McDonald. As a former Commissioner, co-mayor, and retired out of civil defense, and long time being the Babe Ruth Baseball Commissioner, I know the McDonald family very well through our village's sport, especially baseball. I known James played for Ganai Heights, for the Babe Ruth Baseball. We travel on many tournaments throughout the region. And since he's a young, young man, you know, playing baseball for Ganai Heights, I was the Commissioner for Babe Ruth, for Guam. I take care of over 1,000 youth, young adults, representing the island, playing Babe Ruth. And I did this for almost 30 years, when I decided to step down as Babe Ruth Commissioner. I know James McDonald is a good catcher. I remember when he got injured, when the ball hit his throat. I remember the father and the mother worked so hard on many fundraising that we have to raise, selling hot plate lunch, to raise $1,000 for every kid to travel to the region tournament. So again, I, I stand here in support of his confirmation. I like him because he start from the bottom up. He's not, he's not a guy coming in from outside with no experience with custom and quarantine. I know, I know this young man, and I have full faith and confidence that he will do a good job. So, in spite of everybody, uh, this afternoon testifying in support of his confirmation, I, I, I go along with everyone's. And again, I urge this committee to act quickly, fast, in confirming James McDonald, so he can be a, a, a Director, not as Acting Director. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco. Major Murfalleen.
Hafadei, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Senator Tom Attah, Senator Uggun, Senator Barnes, and Senator Morrison. My name is Darlene Murfalleen. I am currently the Acting Assistant, uh, Acting Chief of Customs. I am here before you to provide an oral and written testimony in support of James McDonald's confirmation as the Director of Customs and Quarantine Agency of Guam. James McDonald and I began our law enforcement career as police officers with the Department of Public Safety, known now as Guam Police Department. We were both beat cops patrolling on motorcycles, assigned to the Neighborhood Patrol. After serving more than five years in the police department, James and I transferred to the Department of Commerce and became Customs Officers in 1982. I left the Customs Service after one year to work in the private sector, but James remained. Upon my return to Customs Service in 1989, James was still with the agency and came up the rank and file as an Assistant Chief. I have served under his command as a Customs Officer One, Customs Officer Two, Customs Officer Three, and Customs Officer Supervisor. While working with them, he displayed professionalism when interacting with the public and with other officers. He showed tenacity when adversity confronted him. He made wise decisions focusing on the mission of the agency. When warranted, he was fair and impartial to the officers when administering disciplinary action. He showed empathy to officers and civilian employees experiencing personal hardship. He respected the opinions of others, even when he disagreed, keeping in mind the goals and objectives of the agency. His long experience in Customs and his vast knowledge in Customs work brought him all the way to the top as the Acting Director prior to his retirement. After his retirement from Customs Service, James was appointed as Guam Homeland Security Advisor. Later, he was appointed as the Administrator of Civil Defense, and at the same time, Director of the Marianas Regional Fusion Center. Just by coincidence, the Director of Customs assigned me to the Marianas Regional Fusion Center, representing Guam Customs. At the Fusion Center, I was trained to be an intelligence analyst. While attending a Fusion Center conference with James McDonald in Virginia in an open forum, James was recognized by the Director of the Fusion Center of Leaders for the hard work and good job that Guam was performing in combating terrorism and transnational crimes. There were previous Directors before James McDonald that were assigned to get the Marianas Regional Fusion Center up and running, but failed. However, James McDonald got the Marianas Regional Fusion Center staff from various law enforcement agencies, got them trained with the basic intelligence threat analysis course as required by Department of Homeland Security, and afforded them with numerous trainings. He completed the construction of a secure room as required by DHS. He completed the renovation of eight workstations for the full-time MRFC personnel. He hosted the first Marianas Regional Fusion Center Conference in Guam, having law enforcement and OCEAN officials from the Asia-Pacific region. His 21 years of Customs Service and 34 years of government service, James McDonald continues to devote his dedication and loyalty to the people of Guam as a public servant. In conclusion, I am in favor and in full support on the confirmation of James McDonald to be the Director of Customs and Quarantine Agency of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Major Murfalleen. Uh, Greg Calvo.
Thank you. Honorable Chairman, Senator Thomas Attah, and members, Senator Frank Uggun, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Tommy Morrison. Buenos, Hafadei, my name is Gregorio Salas Calvo, resident of Timuning Tuman, and a GovGuam retiree. I'm grateful for this opportunity to testify in favor, for, and on behalf of the nominee to the Directorship of the Department of Customs and Quarantine, Mr. James Mariano McDonald. Uh, while older than James, I have interacted with him, the McDonald Brothers, and many other baseball players from the municipality of Ganai Heights since my teenage years. And we've had many occasions to meet, most certainly in family, community, governmental, public affairs, political events, and activities over many, many years. James McDonald and I worked together in the office of Senator Edward Duñez and other Senators in the early 1970s. I recall some of the many relationships, discussions, and activities back in those days when his passion for law and order, law enforcement gravitated to the surface. Many legislative employees back then, I remember, encouraged him as he applied to be a police officer within the Department of Public Safety. And he was hired. And I might add, he would come back every once in a while with his motorcycle. Many years later, he eventually applied for and was accepted as a Customs and Quarantine Officer. The James McDonald that I knew then and have known for almost 45 years is a man of integrity. This then brings me to the reason why I decided that I must be a part of the public input in favor of this confirmation. It seems the nominations to the top 100 GovGuam executive branch positions that lead, manage, direct the implementation of the departmental and agency mandates, duties, and responsibilities in support of the Governor, Lieutenant Governor's executive actions to public policies, public laws and rules, and regulations are a rare window of opportunity to offer public comment, both on the individual's qualifications and on our island values and beliefs. For this nominee, I desire to be counted. He is a subject matter expert. This is rare. Therefore, among, along with integrity, I also, in my perception, my humble perception, James McDonald is a family man, a respected community leader in his own municipality of Ganai Heights, and, and in many of the villages around the island. I still believe he has a clean fear of God, he seeks the truth, and he most certainly hates covetousness. I believe that he would continue to serve our government of Guam well, thus benefiting our people. Sir Dusmasi, for your kind consideration for this testimony in support of a friend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calvo. Mr. Bredaglio.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman, Senator Tom Attah, Senator Frank Uggun Jr., Senator Tina Munia Barnes, and Senator Tommy Morrison. My name is Fred Bredaglio, and I'm also a retired government employee, a retired Chief of Police for the Guam Police Department. And it gives me the pleasure to, um, urge this committee to vote in support of the confirmation of James P. McDonald. I call him Jim because we go back in the late 70s, a class of 77 in terms of high school. And you know, just getting to know, uh, Jim, you know, you know, as the chief of police when I was at the helm, you know, he was the Homeland Security Director. And that particular responsibility, you know, because when he was in Guam Customs, it was pre-9/11, now it was post-9/11. There was a lot, he displayed and demonstrated this wide interest of really understanding the big picture about what Homeland Security was about. And I had an opportunity to go with him to Aspen, Colorado, where we actually met a lot of national leaders from the administration of George W. Bush, to include the current administration of President Obama. And at that time, I believe, you know, with Jim's interest to really bring back something in return for that conference, as a result of that, we see some of what has happened at the Office of Homeland Security, Guam's Homeland Security, and Office of Civil Defense, because Jim really takes it serious when it comes down to ensuring that our island is protected. He brings a wealth of experience, as you heard from other testimony, you know, he used to be a police officer in the Guam Police Department. And then he brings that wide experience as a Guam Customs Officer rising up to the ranks. And I remember some legislation, I believe Senator Tom introduced, that if we were to retire, we can go back to the rank, could go back to police captain. You know, with Jim, maybe, you know, if he finishes this, he could go back to fill that acting chief slot. But knowing Jim, he understands the values too, that, you know, it's the next generation of leaders in the Guam Customs that he wants them to see them successful. And knowing Jim's heart, you know, I am confident that the Guam Customs and Authority Agency is really going to be moving forward and really progressing with his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question of Major Tyron. You listed 16 substantive accomplishments. And I just want to make sure I understand, you said, in his short time, Jim initiated the following, in his short time since he's been appointed?
In his short time since June, sir.
How long a time is that?
That's probably less than, maybe about four, less than 45 days, sir.
Okay. I look at these, the list of things that he has initiated, and I think they're substantive initiatives. And I think that's a, you know, you bring up a very important point. And I thank you for, I thank you for bringing that up because one of my questions of him, when he comes up, was, you know, what are some of the things that you've done? And I think you've done that quite well. Thank you. I think that's really the only question that I have. Senator, did you? Okay, Senator? Okay. All right. I guess everybody wants to get to the man of the hour here, so. Thank you very much. I'd ask them to get you a glass of water. Your throat might get dry. So, please, go ahead and proceed.
First of all, thank you, Honorable Senator Thomas C. Ada, Chairman of Imena Trentaitres na Les Latouran Guahan, Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Land, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, Procurement, and to all the other senators, Senator Frank Uggan, Senator Tina Barnes, Senator Tommy Morrison. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present my testimony in support of my confirmation as the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency Director. In the past month or so, I have had the privilege and pleasure in serving as the acting director of the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. This has been an honor as I did retire from this great agency after serving 23 years and with a total of 34 years of public service to the government of Guam. While serving in this agency, I had climbed the ranks from a custom officer one to a customs assistant chief and once again as an acting director before my retirement. With my extensive experience working in this agency, I have had the advantage and opportunity in seeing firsthand on what the agency is lacking today. And it also gives me a better vision of what the agency needs in order to accomplish the mission as our island's first line of defense by protecting our island, our people, and our resources. In addition, as the Homeland Security Advisor, Administrator of the Office of Civil Defense, and the Director of the Mariana Regional Fusion Center, I have had the opportunity to attend various trainings dealing with border protection throughout the nation in alignment with counterterrorism. And I am willing to continue sharing and incorporating all my knowledge and experience with this agency and other law enforcement agencies to keep our borders safe as I did as a Homeland Security Advisor. Currently, we have a total of 137 employees, 120 of them are uniform officers. This number is an adequate amount for the current workload that we are. This number is not an adequate amount for the current workload that we are required to perform. For example, in the last three years, we have had an increase in passenger arrival as well as a few new airlines like Jin Air, J.J., Star Marianas, Sabu Pacific, being added to the Guam route. At the commercial port, we have had to deal with an increase of container inspections due to unwanted pests arriving in vessels as our buyer's security task force officers have been working diligently in mitigating the issue with limited resources. However, our number of personnel continued to decrease. Back in 2000, we had 220 total employees, 180 of them were uniform officers, which was a good amount then. However, every year, the demands and scope of our duties have expanded. Since the year 2000 to now, we have had a 60% loss of personnel in our agency due to several reasons such as job opportunity elsewhere, upward progression within the agency was stalemate. As the acting director, I have already taken steps to ensure that our agency continues to get our numbers back up to the level where our officers can perform their duties proficiently and effectively. Because the employees are the backbone of this agency, I made it a priority to visit the employees in all the sections within the agency. To date, I have met about 95% of the uniform officers and civilian staff. I wanted to ensure that my future goals correlated with their suggestions and recommendations as expressed from our employees. I'm confident that with my leadership and support from my staff, that together, we will make the agency great once again. With the understanding of the employees' inputs regarding the lack of manpower and upward progression opportunities, it is my intention to work closely with the administration and the legislature and identifying funds to aggressively recruit around 30 to 50 trainees to start in the beginning of fiscal year 2017. A few days ago, I requested to open several promotional positions to fill the vacancies within the fiscal year 2016 due to retirements, resignations of several officers. This would allow to open several officer one positions to fill immediately in order to recover minimal losses from this current year, 2016. I then intend on working with leadership to recruit an additional 50 trainees sometime in April or May of 2017. Should we be able to recruit the 50 trainees at the beginning of the fiscal year and another 50 trainees in May of 2017, this will bring our agency numbers closer to or even more than what we had in the year 2000. In addition to recruitment, our agency is looking to reorganize and expand our scope of duties. We are looking to add new divisions and sections within the organizational chart to ensure that we provide better services to the public. This reorganization would allow us to open up more positions for our officers to progress upwards in their career. Another goal in mind is to increase networking with our local and federal counterparts like GPD, GFD, Guam Visitors Bureau, Environmental Protection Agency, Public Health and Social Services, the Mayor's Council, Guam Homeland Security, the Office of Civil Defense, Department of Homeland Security, the FBI, the U.S. Attorney's Office, DEA, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, Homeland Security Investigation, U.S. Postal Service, Joint Region Marianas, and all private partners as they play a big part in the sharing of information and regional collaboration, especially with providing additional training and funding. We currently have eight personnel assigned to the task force officers who report to federal agencies, expanding their knowledge and experience with enforcing both local and federal statutes and keeping our island safe, the entering of illegal narcotics, contraband with the help of automated systems through smart technology to counter the threats of terrorism, plus any pandemic threats to our island such as human trafficking, which is currently on the rise within our region. I want to expand the task force manpower to continue to accomplish these missions, tasks ahead. With just a few of these goals, I have explained to you that I would like to achieve as the Director of Customs. I have so much more to offer this great agency. I humbly ask for your support in giving me the opportunity and full authority to achieve these goals in keeping our island safe. Seju Massey, Senator.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. I'm going to go ahead now and open for questions from the panel. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first of all, let me just start off by thanking the governor and congratulating the governor for recognizing that border protection is certainly a critical aspect as it's inclusive in law enforcement as well as public safety here in our island community. And giving you the opportunity to be able to serve as the Director of Customs and Quarantine. Mr. McDonald, I think we've already had a general understanding in terms of conversations prior to this confirmation hearing. And the only thing I have to say, and I hope you take this in good justice, da lai, kalanu punu toru chonku. I was just saying in Chamorro, as da lai is, boy, you really, in referencing, paraphrasing, you really used a lot of trees to be able to provide all your information. Because this packet reflects your credentials that you bring to the table. And one thing about it that's really unique about your confirmation is not only have you served in the agency for 23 years, you also moved up to the Fusion Center, where in fact, you were tasked with the responsibility of being able to bring law enforcement entities, infrastructure representatives, together so that you can look at anti-terrorism activities. Those were things that you did in the background for about a good two or three years, and you established the Fusion Center. That was one of the initiatives that you took on. And you led the charge with the direction of Governor Calvo to be able to establish that. And that speaks volumes in terms of the perspective that you bring to the table. It's not only working as customs director in this particular case, but it's also understanding the nature and the threat of terrorism out there. And certainly, that's an added feature that you bring to the table. The only issue that I have, and let me also comment that I think your willingness to work with members of this legislation, with the chairman, is truly reflective in your attitude and your approach. So, I commend you with that, and I certainly hope that you will continue to work, not only extensively with the front office, but also with the chairman and members of this body. In terms of the numbers that you provided, at one time, you had 220 total personnel, of which 180 were uniform personnel. Today, you have 137, down from 220, of which you have 120 uniform officers. So, that's a significant drop. Knowing full of the threat level continues to increase and the challenges for our men and women in law enforcement, and in this case, as it applies to customs and quarantine. So, I commend you for your ambitious effort and sharing with the committee and the chairman about aggressively recruiting personnel. And I say this because the last time, in line with recruiting additional personnel, 50 by the beginning of the fiscal year, 50 by May of next year, you and I know that there has to be sufficient funding in place. And you and I, as, and also your previous director, had worked on adjusting the customs user fees. And we were successful in that about three years ago. And that was what has taken the agency to where it is today in terms of the increased fees and being able to cover the additional 20% for law enforcement. Now, my question is, knowing and understanding that component, what is your plan so that we on this end can help you and the governor in terms of effectuating, realizing what you just shared with us? 100 new customs officers by the end of the next fiscal year, if in fact, the funding is in place? So, can you just share with the committee in terms of what your plans are and how you anticipate to realize this?
Yes, one good example is the, when I retired.
Speak to the mic.
About 12 years ago, when I retired from the customs service, the custom user fee was $8.29. As I returned to customs, it is still the same, $8.29 per passenger. As I compared it with the passenger fee from Narita and the United States, a couple of weeks ago, I sent my son to Oregon to visit his sister and stay there for the summer. I took a look at his ticket. And when he flew on Delta to Narita, he was only there for an hour transiting. He was charged in his ticket $36 just for one hour to pass through Narita. As he transited Narita, headed to Los Angeles, he was charged a total of $76 when he hit the continental U.S. in which he stayed in Los Angeles for a couple hours before he took, you know, another flight to Portland, Oregon. That's one way of, you know, of increasing our revenues so that we can man our borders, you know, properly, you know, and automate all our systems. Because when I retired from customs before, like what Major Vince Perez was mentioning, we were automated at that time. As I return now, the poor guys on the line, on the front line, are just using folders with names of suspects inside. So, those are the, one of the things that I want to push forward to make sure that we get fully automated and get tied in with federal agencies. And also, reach out to Department of Homeland Security, like our counterpart down at the commercial port, Ms. Joanne Brown. I took a look at her, the accomplishments that she has down at the Port Authority. And as she looked, she has tremendous amount of grants that she received from U.S. Department of Homeland Security. So, knowing that Guam Customs is in charge of border security and is enforcing anti-terrorism measures along the borders, we are more than justified to apply for those type of grants that will eventually even support getting our own customs house so that we don't have to be paying millions of dollars, you know, to the Airport Authority for, you know, for the lease of, you know, their buildings. Those type of money can be used to hire employees. And also, what we need to do is start putting some teeth into our laws. As I noticed, we have a fines and forfeitures section of customs. But as I look at their record to see if there's any fines that have been imposed in the past 12 years, seems like every time there's a broken seal, which is supposed, you know, the customer's supposed to be, and the violator's supposed to be charged $25,000 fine. It seems like it's just a slap on the hand and say, "Don't do it next time." And then when, down at the port, since they acquired the X-ray system that's down there, the advanced X-ray system. the advanced X-ray system, a lot of our officers have been finding undeclared items, false declarations. Those are the type of violations that we need to take seriously. Because we're surrounded by adversaries, you know, around the Asia-Pacific region. If you're familiar with Homeland Security, these guys, the terrorists, will take a look at our borders and say, "Oh, wow, they have a military buildup in Guam. It's a U.S. possession." That should be an interesting target. Their customs are very lax. There's no enforcement there. So for the sake of the, for the defense of Guam and, you know, our country, we need to reemphasize that. You know, we don't want to wait until something happens like France and some other areas of the world. I'm the type of guy that's very proactive. And if there's a will, there's always a way to get things done.
Thank you, Mr. Director. I just wanted you to get it on the record that in order to effectuate the recruitment of additional Customs Officers is going to require a revisiting of the cargo fees as well as the airport Customs fees so that in fact it can assist you in terms of your budgetary requirements. And I'm very pleased with your comments today. It has not only been in the last month, I mean, you know that several Customs Officers has communicated with my office. It's not that only in the last month, but also during your entire career as a Customs Officer, you have always been concerned about the troops, the men and women in the Customs Department. And by virtue, I opened up my statement in the beginning by virtue of commending the Governor because certainly he's selected the right individual to be able to sit in this capacity. Now, we just have to provide you with the tools to run with it. Looking at federal grants, thinking outside the box, also focusing on automation, giving your men and women the tools and the resources and the equipment to do their job, and then also reinforcing that with additional personnel are all very key factors. And I certainly hope and encourage you to work with the Chairman and also members of this legislature so that we can help you to protect our borders. So thank you, Mr. McDonald, and you have my support.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Barnes?
Situs Massey, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to Chief McDonald Duncan, Situs Massey, for accepting this position and from the Governor's appointment. I want to share with you, as I look at the men and women out there here to support you, and as I listen intently to the testimony and support for you and what you've accomplished to date in the very short time that you've been there, no stranger to the Customs and Quarantine and Homeland Security, your years in government service, 34 years, and just being able to share your perspective and including the communication with community stakeholders, government stakeholders, I truly believe that you have a very, very optimistic approach. And that's why a lot of the troops from Customs are here to support you. One that really touches my heart is the awareness and making sure that we are protected from such pandemic threats to our island such as human trafficking and realizing that though we don't want it to have it in our backyard, it is already here. And making sure that we bring that awareness so that eradication is there and that you guys are going to be in the forefront to support that. I just want to say with all the proposals that you've shared to the previous speakers, Senator Uggan and to our Chair, I just want to say I support your efforts. I'm hoping that if we can't get it on tomorrow's session agenda, that we can get it on the earliest session that's come to date. I don't know if we've ever done that.
My staff works hard, but they don't do miracles.
I just want to say thank you. I also want to thank your mom, Yoda Sainao. Thank you for being here to your brothers and sisters who are all here. I want to say thank you for their support in supporting you because I know it's not easy. This job is going to demand a lot of your time in working closely with your officers, and it takes a lot. So again, thank you. I support you. You have my vote of confidence on that, on session floor. And I want to say thank you to all the men and women at Customs and Quarantine for realizing that you will be getting a Director that's very familiar with what is going on in the trenches of Customs and Quarantine. Sena Massey.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Mr. McDonald. And thank you for all who provided testimony here today. I've played with, under, and against in one way or another in baseball. And I thank you for all the guidance of your family in sport and what they still continue to do today for our youth and representing that in your community and civic involvement. And the list can go on and on as what you have done outside of your professional career. I want to thank you for articulating, as the Chairman alluded to, your strategic goals and outlining what you look forward to accomplish with your team up at Customs. And you're right, we all know the Customs and Quarantine is the first line of defense for our island and protecting our borders, ensuring that our people have an understanding of your mandate and what you clearly ought to do. I'm sure with your experience, and thank you for sharing, and even with those in the rank and file who've shared the challenges and understanding those challenges and how you're already working to fulfill those challenges going forward. I certainly look forward to working with you and your team, with the committee, and helping your agency move forward. So congratulations on your appointment, and you have my full support.
Thank you very much, Senator. Mr. McDonald, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate the involvement that you've had. In the past several days, I've been writing to Customs asking for a lot of information. And you could have easily just told your staff guy that had all the information I needed, send it to him. But you actually took the time to respond to my requests, and it wasn't one of these, "Well, we could do this or that." Just, "We will give you the information you need." And I truly appreciate that. So to reciprocate, I also want to let you know that my door will always be open to your office to, so we can sit down and take a look at, you know, existing policies and how we might update them to more accurately reflect today's environment. I want to comment on a remark made by Mr. Nick Francisco. He says, "You're not a guy coming in from the outside," which is very true. After 23 years in the agency, you certainly have a good idea of how that agency works. But I think what makes you an even better choice is the fact that you've had this 13-year cooling off away from the agency. So now you can come back, and whatever pari pari was developed over the 23 years there, guys, it's a new guy coming in. So I think that makes you an even much better choice. So, you know, you're not going to be an apprentice for the first couple of years. You're going to be in there. And obviously, as what Major Tyron has pointed out, you certainly hit the ground running, opening up closet doors, looking what's inside. And I think that's certainly very commendable. Now, I just, just a couple of other things. And before I go further, I'm sorry, Mrs. McDonald, I want to recognize, it's your mom.
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. McDonald. Thank you for taking the time to be here in support of your son. I think that's great. Like I said, my staff works hard, but we don't. But try the miracle part. I tell you what, treasure the fact that your mom is still here to give you that support. Just a couple of things before we close this confirmation hearing. One is the fact that, and it was pointed out by a couple of the officers that testified. The recent indictments of, you know, several of the Customs Officers certainly has given the agency a black eye. So it's one of those, you know, you've moved, the agency has moved forward 10 steps, something like that takes you back 11. So kind of, maybe if you could just kind of share your thoughts, how, what are you going to do to kind of, to ensure that those sort of things don't happen?
Yes, as I came in the department almost a month ago, I was informed by, you know, my management staff that they haven't had division head meetings in a year or two. So that was the first thing I did. As I said, every week, we will have a division head meeting. And based on what has happened, you know, the agency has a problem with, you know, holding up the integrity, especially for the public out there. You know, it's like we got a black eye this past year. So what I did is I informed them that I would be holding them accountable so that every time we have that division head meeting, they are to report their status out in the field. So what I did is I went out in the field, talked to all the officers that was out there. And based on the information I got is that a lot of our managers weren't going out to the field and, you know, checking their supervisors so that, you know, they can submit their weekly reports, monthly reports. So what I did is I told our trading division, I said, "From now on, I want you to institute trainings, training certifications every year for our officers so that we can hold them accountable and so that we can instill that discipline in them, like the military. Every six, every three months, you have this quarterly training, ethics training, the do's and the don'ts. Because if you don't guide these young officers in Customs, you don't, there's a lot of temptations out there. These guys go out and inspect businesses, and they get offered a lot of, you know, a lot of things out there. So if you don't, if you don't monitor them and you don't give them that proper guidance and give them that training and discipline that needs to be instilled in their, in their structure, these guys will veer off to the left or the right. So that's why I'm holding my majors accountable. I said, "You guys need to instill training in these guys, keep the meetings going on, and you have to have that, like what they say in the military, battle rhythm. Because if you don't have that, the guys are going to stray away, like what's been happening in the past so many years." So that's what I bring to this table, is more accountability, you know, for our managers and supervisors out there. And also, an extensive and aggressive outreach to the public, to be more transparent with them, to show them what Customs does out there and how it affects their lives out there, how we protect and make them sleep well in the evening when our guys up in the airport, you know, are working 24/7. They're looking for any types of contraband that, you know, we've seen an increase of drugs. A lot of meth has been coming in. And I'd like to provide you guys on, you know, when we meet, you know, after this session, a record of, to show that the effects of drugs that it has on this island. And the reason why I tasked Major Phil Tyron to seek guidance and funding from HIDA. Nobody knew what HIDA was when I came into Customs. That's high-intensity drug area. 47 states are certified HIDA. That means that the authorities within those states request for federal intervention into the state so they can get an infusion of federal funds. And that's what I'm looking at, you know. But we need guidance from the Legislature, the Administration, and the judicial area to support this cost so that we can get HIDA funding for Guam so that we can fund the more officers. We can fund the bomb dogs. We can fund Department of Corrections, give them funding. We can give the Police Department funding. I've seen all of this back there when I go back there to meetings. And I push myself into those HIDA meetings just so that I can see what other states are benefiting from. And you can take a look at Hawaii. Hawaii has got an enormous amount of federal funding from U.S. Department of Justice, the HIDA funding. So that's what I offer with it.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that. And finally, I guess to end on a lighter note, I just want to emphasize the fact that your officers at the ports of entry are either the first or the second person that a visitor from off-island meets. And it means a lot when, you know, that visitor comes up to an officer who's smiling at him and not someone who wants to eat my lunch. So, you know, that is something that I think you need to continue to emphasize. And, you know, I don't know, maybe they're playing with my mind or something, but I think that's an important matter, just as important as, you know, the other things that have been discussed. And I also hope that you take the time and the effort to put some emphasis on that. So with that, there being no further testimony, I don't have any other questions. We will work hard to get your packet out as quickly as possible. And, but I'll tell you right now, you certainly have my support.
Situs Massey, Mr. Chair.
And so with that, this confirmation hearing is completed. Thank you very much. All right, we'll just take a few minutes to, everybody stand up and stretch a leg, and then we'll start on the veterans' bills that are coming up. Got the sign-up sheet? Hey Jake? Good job, good testimony. That's it. We've got Bill 333 first, and that's the Veterans Identification on the Guam driver's license and the Guam Identification Card. Signing up to provide testimony is Fernando Estevez, Governor Carl Gutierrez, they are in favor. The sponsor is here, he'll go ahead and quickly give an overview and introduce the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and first of all, thank you for having this particular public hearing. Mr. Chairman, you're very much aware that over the course of the past many years, there's always been a request by a number of our veterans out there, whether in fact in Guam we can also apply the verbiage "veteran" in a driver's license or in an identification card. And in this particular case, Bill 333-33, would provide that. And it would also provide, it also has a requirement for reporting back to the governor's office and also to the Speaker of the Guam Legislature in terms of how many of our veterans are actually taking advantage of this particular benefit. And just for purposes of reading the verbiage itself, it reads, "Every applicant for a certificate of identification for the Department of Revenue and Taxation, who is a veteran, shall, at the applicant's request, have the word 'veteran' affixed on a section of the certificate of identification. The requirements of this section shall also apply to renewal of the same." So that is what this would basically provide, Mr. Chairman, and we're hopeful that, in fact, the information can also be transposed over to the Guam Veterans Affairs Office to assist with the registration process of our veterans. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we look forward to the testimony.
Okay, well, like I said, there were two people that signed up, and Mr. Fernando Estevez and Governor Carl Gutierrez, both in favor. They're not here, we're going to consider the bill as having been duly heard. Now we're up for Bill Number 334-33, introduced by myself, Frank Uggan, and Senator Tina Barnes. What Bill 334 does is it appropriates the sum of $3,000 relative to special recognition veterans license plates. Now, I want to emphasize that the bill that is introduced is a start, and what would happen then is as a result of the input that we get tonight and other inputs that we have gotten, the bill, those certainly would be taken into account, and amendments may very well be made to the, to the bill. I'm going to go ahead and call up right now Mr. Ricardo Cruz, Nick Francisco, and Mr. Tom Devlin. Okay, gentlemen, go ahead, and so it'll be Mr. Cruz that will start off.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman Tom Ada, and Honorable Senator Frank Uggan, Honorable Senator Tina Barnes, and Honorable Tom Morrison. Thank you for the opportunity to present our case in Bill 334-33, and that, having reviewed, having reviewed the article, rather, before I proceed, I would like to be given the opportunity to first off introduce the medal, Purple Heart Medal, for everybody's awareness, or the fact that I didn't allow myself time to go to school and be a teacher, I like the opportunity to let the folks know what the Purple Heart is all about and how it originates and stuff. So with that, I prepared a little synopsis on the, on the Purple Heart. The Order of the Purple Heart, for military merit, commonly called the Purple Heart, is an American decoration, the oldest military decoration in the world, in present use, and the first award made available to a common soldier. The world's famed and best-loved hero, General George Washington, created it. The Order of the Purple Heart is awarded to members of the armed forces of the United States, who are wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of an enemy, and posthumously awarded to the next of kin in the name of those who are killed in action or die of wounds receiving action. It is definitely a combat declaration. The Military Order of the Purple Heart was formed in 1932, for the protection and mutual interest of all who have received the declaration, composed exclusively of Purple Heart recipients. It is the only strictly combat organization extent, and is the only congressionally-chartered veterans' organization, exclusively for combat wounded veterans. Membership eligibility for those awarded the Purple Heart by the government of the United States of America. The Military Order of the Purple Heart maintains its national headquarters in Springfield, Virginia. Locally, the first three local chapters, Chapter 13 and 15, was chartered in November 12, 2003. To this day garnering membership of over 130 members, enabling the establishing of a department titled Department of Asia-Pacific, comprising of members from Guam, members from Guam, Siam, Mya, Philippines, Palau, and FSM. And in reference to the bill, 334-33, I was actually unaware of the existence of Bill 334, and in attendance at the annual MOPH convention held at Nico Hotel on May 28, 2016, we presented the chairman, Honorable Tom Ada, and Senator, Honorable Senator Tina Barnes, and Senator Frank Uggan with a formal request for a Guam Purple Heart license plate. Having reviewed the proposed bill in its entirety, the MOPH Department of Asia-Pacific is submitting the following recommendations for consideration or included into the bill. A, and that a combat wounded Purple Heart plate may be issued for an auto motorcycle or truck registered for 20,000 pounds or less, which is titled or leased in Guam in the name of the Purple Heart Medal recipient. Number two, an application, any person who is a veteran currently serving as an active member of the U.S. military, and awarded the Purple Heart Medal verified by Department of Defense 214, commonly known as DD Form 214, or DD Form slash 215, also 55-33, General Order, or letter of transmission that reflects receipt of the Purple Heart Medal, which should be produced when requesting for the license plate and certified by the government of Guam Veterans Affairs Office, and is the registered owner or lessee of the title vehicle with the Department of Revenue and Tax, or who makes application for an original registration or renewal registration of any such vehicle, may apply to the motor vehicle division of the Department of Revenue and Taxation with the Purple Heart License Plate, which shall be affixed to the vehicle to which, for which the registration is sought in lieu of regular plates. The color and design of the plate, as we have submitted, enclosure three, or attached, rather, is the design that was actually approved by the members of the order. Going further, and also proof of valid insurance must be present at the time of application. Issuance, a Purple Heart license plate shall be issued only to the registered owner or lessee of the vehicle on which they are to be displayed. In addition, number six, surviving spouse can use the plates after sponsor's death, provided he or she does not remarry, by submitting applicable verifying documents for deceased member Purple Heart award, copy of veteran's death certificate, and applying and paying applicable registration fee. Number seven, for fee, both the Purple Heart and vehicle registration are free for one vehicle or motorcycle. One additional plate can be purchased for the amount commensurate the fee charged for a regular license plate for the class of vehicle to which the plate is applied for. Favorable consideration is requested in this matter in view of the federal income of veterans being expended on island. In addition to number seven, I just thought of another issue under, under the, or the fee, and that upon approval of the, or at the onset of the effective date of the law, becoming law, for the Purple Heart License Plate, that an amendment to the law to permit a registered owner being the Purple Heart recipient's vehicle to secure its current plate and to acquire the Purple Heart Plate at no charge. An explanation of that verbiage, having a current vehicle registered and not due for expiration for a while, and at the onset of the law, would, the Purple Heart recipient, registered owner of the vehicle, would be given the opportunity to, or option, to transfer or surrender the current plate for the Purple Heart License Plate at no charge. Funding, though unfortunate, it is understood that the government of Guam is financially strapped, unable to fund Bill 334-33 for fiscal year 2016. Be assured that the MOPH Department of Asia-Pacific is in good standing, willing and able to fund the template, or whatever device needed to formulate the Purple Heart License Plate for production without further delay. My discussion with Bill 334-33, Section 1, Paragraph A, relevant to mentioned military awards for valor other than the Purple Heart. Honorable senators, recognize that it is not within my purview to comment or act on this award, as I am not a recipient of such award or awards. In addition, the mission statement for the Military Order of the Purple Heart is that it is to foster an environment of goodwill and camaraderie among combat wounded veterans, promote patriotism, support necessary legislative initiatives, and most importantly, provide service to all veterans and their families. MOPH vision statement is to undertake a proactive representation in all forms of public opinion that will consistently seek to improve the statues and stature of its veteran members, their dependent families, and survivors. Currently, the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Department of Asia-Pacific, contributes to various nonprofit organizations, and is a sponsor of Fortune Bingo at Comptess Mall in Dadeville. I am aware that the proposed Bill 334 is, has been introduced, and as I mentioned, being unaware, what I have provided and produced and stated is, for the most part, contrary to the contents of Bill 334. And the fact that, again, with the other award for valor, the Purple Heart, as I mentioned, and given a synopsis of the organization and the founding of the Purple Heart, it is, the Purple Heart, Department of Asia-Pacific, is, is an organization by itself, and although with the, with the current draft of 334-33, I recommend that the consideration for Purple Heart License Plate or law be, be, where I to proceed as expeditious, and that we had felt, and we felt that as we travel through the mainland, and as well, probably witnessed by honorable senators aboard military bases or even in the state, license plate are very visible in the, in the, in the vehicles. And it only signifies that I think we're behind the curveball on, on actually displaying the plate, which represent combat wounded veterans, and also, most importantly, the recipient of the Purple Heart have an extensive pride of the medal on account of their personal experience in combat. With that, I recommend that, and I would make myself available for further discussion into the bill, I would more than be, I'd be more than happy to be a part of the recomposition of the bill itself if it goes to that point or that matter. Senator, again, I say it's unfortunate that my letter was after the fact of the, of the proposed bill, the initial, initiation of the proposed bill. Like I said, again, I volunteer my services for further discussions or into the matter. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's certainly not a problem that you're given additional ideas and recommendations to change some of the verbiage, but by introducing the bill, it has started the discussion, and it is through that start that then we start, because certainly the committee does not have monopoly on all the ideas. And I think a lot of the, a lot of the points that you have raised are good points. We have Mr. Nick Francisco, you signed up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tom Ada, Senator Uggan, Senator Tina Barnes, Senator Tom Morrison. Again, my name is Nick Francisco. I am the senior vice commander for the Department of Asia-Pacific Guam. I've been a chapter commander at the beginning of this 1315, the original chapter, now we have three chapter. We discuss this, we approve everything that we want to say today. And just for your information, I know that you have a copy of all the different states' license plate, the Military Order of the Purple Heart, wounded combat veteran. And we have a sample here that has been approved by the department, by the chapter, by the members, by the ladies auxiliary, that this is the design, a very simple design for Guam, showing Guam wounded combat veterans. And I know that right now, I have on my license plate a sticker, where sometimes I'm embarrassed to show other state, or tell other state that we have a Purple Heart, but we have to stick a sticker on it. And it faded after so long. And if I listen to all the recipient of the Purple Heart, the story of how they got wounded, and I can share a little bit about myself.
And I come to this chest hearing, public hearing, to support this Bill 334-33 and asking for amendment of this bill to separate the bill to create the Military Order of Purple License Plate. We are not opposed to the other veteran groups such as Distinguished Cross, Silver Star, Navy Cross, Bronze Star. We're not opposed to this, but we cannot speak for them. But we're here to testify in support of the Purple Heart license plate, that we have an organization, we have department and three chapter. We discuss this, we approve everything that we want to say today. And just for your information, I know that you have a copy of all the different states' license plate, the Military Order of the Purple Heart, wounded combat veteran. And we have a sample here that have been approved by the department, by the chapter, by the members, by the ladies auxiliary, that this is the design, a very simple design for Guam, showing Guam wounded combat veterans. And I know that right now, I have on my license plate a sticker, where sometimes I'm embarrassed to show other state or tell other state that we have a Purple Heart, but we have to stick a sticker on it. And it faded after so long. And if I listen to all the recipient of the Purple Heart, the story of how they got wounded, and I can share a little bit about myself. I was there in July, another evening, one month in August, I got wounded, in the middle of the jungle of Vietnam, about 2:00 in the morning. Our platoon is out there to secure the company coming in, and they, out of the 30, I think only seven did not receive any wounded. After that, I cannot repeat what happened until I think year 2001, when I was in the big island of Hilo for rehab of all my PTSD. I have never cried in my life, telling the story of how I got wounded and hearing the other 10 veterans their story. My mother died, but I never cried that hard. But that evening or that day, that I sharing the story with my counselor, advisors, doctor, I have to say everything to try to let it go and start a new beginning. It's so painful, and I said to you, to you committee here, if you only hear the story of all these other Purple Heart, how they got wounded, I think they're only asking for a license plate. And I share with you, like I said, JQ Salas here, JQ, I'm always happy when I see you because he's one of the seniority or senior in our group. And I thank you, JQ, for coming down here. I thank you, JQ, because JQ still can go, but said, Nick, I cannot drive at night. I said, JQ, can you find a neighbor to drive you down there and we can take you home? But you know, I come here and I hope that I want to say, wake up senators, wake up. Help the veteran, help the wounded combat veteran. And I hope you do this before November 8. I hope you do this before November 8. I'm not threatening nobody, but I would like to see this before Veterans Day. I don't think I'm asking much, and we're willing to fund this, we're willing to pay for this.
That's why we're here tonight.
Thank you, Senator, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you. And again, like I said, I come here today, and I hope this is the last time I'm going to come here for a license plate. Because it touches my heart. I'll be leaving in August 8 for the National Purple Heart Convention in Virginia. I have chat with the region commander that our hearing for license plate is finally going to be heard. I says, Nick, you don't tell me you don't have a license plate for Guam. I said Guam always come last. And I hate to say that, I hate to repeat that because the reason six is composed of Hawaii, Hawaii have their license plate, Utah have their license plate, Arizona have their license plate, Nevada have their license plate, California have their license plate, only Guam.
I get it. I get the point. Thank you very much.
So again, Senator Tamada, thank you for this. I think 334-33 is the beginning. I thank you for this. Senator Frank Algon, Tina Munnebarn, Tommy Morrison, I thank you again, and I hope that, like I said, that this will happen before Veterans Day. Thank you, Jesus Massey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Francisco. Mr. Devlin.
Good evening, senators. I was asked to talk about a week ago, and I didn't really know what I was going to talk about. And maybe you can give me a few minutes and I'll talk about my personal experiences. This is my Purple Heart, I'd like you to take a look at it, touch it. Go ahead, pick it up. Because when you look at the members behind me, there are memories with that. I received that in 1968, United States Naval Hospital, Guam. How many years ago was that? And here I am today, testifying for a Purple Heart license plate. Déjà vu, I wouldn't think I would be back on Guam, but here I am on Guam. I received that license plate three days after I had surgery to keep me alive. The average patient at the Naval Hospital, Marines, was approximately three weeks. I was here six months. Six months, because they felt I couldn't make it home. My home, in that particular time in 1968, was Guam. Guam was my home because my home was in New York City. My family were the people on Guam. And I want all the senators to remember that, because there are probably very few veterans who lived in the States, went to the Navy Hospital, were wounded, got a Purple Heart from the Navy Hospital on Guam to come back to Guam. And you should remember that. But also, when you look at that medal, there's something about that medal. It's a small medal compared to other medals in the military. It's one of the only medals that nobody in the military wants, no one. There are many members that have that medal that have more than one, that have more than two. They're sitting in this audience behind me. All they're asking for is a license plate, which they're going to fund. That medal for myself means sacrifice, means blood, means pain, and sadly means death. Now, I'll give you a little note when I landed on Guam in 1968 in a medevac flight. The Air Force handled the medevac flights. I landed on a Tuesday. We had probably about 70 of us. There was one fellow that was about two tears down. Senator Frank Algon probably knows more about the Air Force than, you know, than I would with their planes. And we were on these portable stretchers. Well, one fellow, they were working on him, and they were working on him, they were working on him, and then when we landed, they weren't working on him anymore. They were quiet, they took the rest of us off, because that Marine died on the runway in Guam. So when we talk about a license plate, the license plate is a piece of metal. It's a symbolism of the license plate. It's a symbolism through the legislature of how the people on Guam say, thank you for service well done. And I think a license plate is not that much to ask for. We've earned it, and probably a lot more. And those members behind me are looking at you and saying, the ball is in your court, not our court. We can't vote for this. Senators, you have to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Devlin. I got some questions here, and I'm sure the members also have some questions. The first question that I have, maybe if you can provide me some input, and that is the question of the issuance, the issuance of the plate. It's going to be numbered sequentially. Purple Heart 01, 02, and the last information I have is that there's a total count of about 135 Purple Heart recipients on island. Somebody has suggested that probably after the bill is passed, we should probably have like a 30, 45-day registration period, and those who are interested of, you know, getting a Purple Heart license plate should come in and register to get the plate. But that the issuance of, let's say, that Purple Heart 1 should probably be issued based on the date of award. So certainly, somebody who received the Purple Heart during deployment in Iraq probably got his a lot later than, let's say, somebody who got his in Korea. So can I maybe get your thoughts on that idea?
My own personal opinion?
Yes.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Purple Heart is a Purple Heart, whether it's issued in the Civil War or was issued today. There's no difference. Now, when you said that there were maybe 135 Purple Heart recipients, there are more on the island of Guam. Not every member of the military of the Purple Heart, you know, not everybody that gets a Purple Heart belongs to the military of the Purple Heart. A lot of Purple Heart recipients don't even belong to veterans organizations. But my educated, yes, there are a lot more Purple Heart recipients on Guam than people know.
Mr. Cruz, do you have any comments on that?
My comment on that, Senator, is again, as we had discussed per se, we even brought up World War II veteran. Frankly, the only World War II veteran I know is the mayor of Mariso. That's actually a military veteran that I know, and he's over 85 years old. And a Purple Heart is not. But again, the Order of the Purple Heart is prioritizing, as I mentioned also, it's, in my opinion, it's actually structured in-house, and the more, in my view, the more appropriate way to disseminate this numerical sequence is, again, by staffing level, going down the chain of command, so to speak. Just as in the Colonel in the Army, obviously, 06 has got his parking stall right in front of the door of the commissary of the exchange. Whereas I take second seat, where I'm next to the Colonel in an 06 parking lot in the commissary, the fact that seniority by rank is how most of the structured sequence of numeric comes into play. And I briefly brought it up to the staff of the organization, and unbeknownst to me, they came up with a list, as I mentioned, in accordance with the staffing level. You go from the commander, the senior vice, the junior vice, and the secretary, the treasurer on the department level, and we have discussed of going to the chapter commanders as well, coming immediately after the department staff. We have three chapter commanders in sequence following that numerical arrangements. I listen and I hear your suggestion about holding a 30-day enrollment or application, and I would lean to having that 30-day enrollment firsthand privilege to the active members, full-time members, lifetime members, and then with the formulation of the plate, there is obviously going to be more names added to our roster, membership roster, because of the interest in applying for the Purple Heart license plate. So our numbers are going to jump up expectedly, as mentioned of 135, we're anticipating a large number of enrollment, a membership enrollment. With the enrollment, there's an enticement for non-members to sign up and join the organization because we will fund their membership, lifetime membership, which is $50 per member, as well as providing them a Purple Heart cap, a dark color. So there's a benefit, and there's a lot of recognition that's going to come into play, there's a lot of interest actually developing on just the thought of having a Purple Heart license plate applied on your vehicle. Respectfully, with Tom's input and comment and testimony, there's no other way to put it. We are proud, but and then again, we're not guys that go out there and look for that medal. We're in the wrong place at the right time or vice versa. So that's my input on the numeric sequence. I also mentioned that it's an in-house matter. I would think that the assignment of the Purple Heart license plate is an in-house matter, just as the veteran's license plate took part, was kicked off. First come, first served. 30-day sign up, you get the first 100 license plates, so to speak. You have an option of two license plate as a veteran's license plate. That would be my idea or solution to the assignment of, according to the numeric system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. I listened to the two gentlemen here, and all I can say on your question there is, I think that we have a department, we have three chapter. We have roughly close to 40 that come to our function, our meeting, and those are the members that keeping the department's chapter alive. We have an election every April, and we elect our department commanders, senior vice, junior vice down the line, as well as the chapter commander, vice commander. And I think that your question, I think should be best handled in-house. So we can say that the department commander will get, if he's number one, number one, or 01, whatever, then the next, and next, then down the three chapter, chapter 1315, chapter 787, chapter 2007.
Okay. We don't need to cut through the details tonight, I just wanted to kind of get a general feedback.
I think that's the only fair way.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And I'll work closely with the MOPH to see how we will amend the language in 334 to incorporate some of your recommendations, okay? To include the motorcycle license plate, the truck. And, okay, all right. Senator Algon, did you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and to the three who have provided testimony this evening, I want to thank you very much. To all of the Purple Heart members who are in the audience, thank you also for participating and joining in and at least observing some of this discussion. You know, sometimes these public hearings do not really give proper credit to the observers and the participants and the supporters of some of these initiatives, and I just want to recognize, Mr. Chairman, that there are in excess of 30 Purple Heart members or their wonderful supporting spouses or children or grandchildren, so I just want to recognize that for the record. You know, I understand the tremendous frustration that was shared by one of the testimonies that was provided a little earlier. And yes, perhaps we're behind the eight ball, so to speak, in terms of being able to entertain this, but you know, when the request was presented on May 28, the chairman introduced his proposal on June 8. So it shows that, in fact, his office had already initiated work and was working on formulating this particular legislation, and that, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the chairman or the sponsor of the legislation, but if you look at the timing, you know, it maybe it was ready for introduction and he just introduced it shortly after your request, the request of the organization. So I want to thank you for being a proponent of this. I want to also say this much, there's two individuals that I know of, and please extend my apologies if I don't recognize the others who have left us already, but Chief Jack Shimizu and also Mr. Victor Tabius, were also very strong proponents and active members within the Purple Heart organization. So I just also want to recognize them for their efforts because I think that their spirit is here in the room in terms of all of you advocating for this. I want to close with this, Mr. Chairman. I understand the frustration about why it's taking this long just for a license plate, but I also need to recognize and highlight that the people of Guam have been extremely supportive of our Purple Heart recipients. If you take a look at the property that was granted and your organization was able to build a beautiful monument right there at Plaza de España or Skinner's Plaza, which is a tribute to all of the Purple Heart recipients and their members, I commend you and I congratulate you for that because that was really a giving of the people of Guam, that parcel of property so that you can build that monument. So it was a very strong partnership. Also, the people of Guam endorsed the idea of naming Route 8, Purple Heart Highway. And that was an initiative that was pushed very strongly by yourself, Mr. Francisco, and also with Chief Shimizu in terms of making sure that that was realized, and I do want to thank you for that. And, and I do remember when, in fact, that particular sign was unveiled. So this community has been extremely supportive of our Purple Heart recipients, we recognize the sacrifice and the injuries that you had incurred as a result of combat, your combat experience, and we will continue to honor each and every one of you. And in this particular case, this is a continuation of the, the recognition that you all really deserve from the local community, so I salute you all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I promise I'll make this really fast. I just want to thank you, gentlemen, for making the presentation to the, to the members of the Purple Heart here and their families. I know that we lost another Purple Heart, and Uncle Dave Sessai is in heaven watching over us right now, saying, you know, let's do it. Senator Uggan talked about the monument, talked about the Purple Heart Highway. I always, you know, it's not easy to say better late than never. I want you folks to know that, that as soon as we got this, we already knew that the chair was working on something and that we'd asked to be a part of that. So I want to thank the chair for giving us the opportunity to be part of the co-sponsorship. I also appreciate, Mr. Cruz, the amendments that you shared this afternoon, and I, I also understand why they wanted to include all the other distinguished medals, and maybe, hopefully, in, in committee markup or through the committee, they can talk about separating the different license plates. They've done that in the, in the past. I do know that I introduced legislations for the fire chiefs, I mean, for the firefighters here on Guam. I want to say to you guys that we are listening. We, we, we do know that all the suffering, the pain, and what you've gone through can never be replaced. It's, it's the reason why we are here, the freedoms that you fought for is why we're here. And, and this is why we are going to help do this and, and work with the recommendations. But I also want to say that, I also want to open that opportunity to look at all the other distinguished medals and maybe work closely with them, because, you know, it's, it's not always easy to go through the process, and when you collaborate and become inclusive, I'm, I'm not saying that if you have the Navy Cross or the Silver Cross, that you're going to get a Purple Heart license plate. Maybe the opportunity is there for that distinguished medal to have their own license plate, but all-inclusive, so that they could recognize it. That's just what's happened. So, Mr. Chair, that's, I have that offer, and, and I'm hoping that we can just think outside the box and be all-inclusive. Senator Massey?
Thank you. Senator Morrison?
Yes, sir.
Honorable Senator, Chair, I might add that in some of the state license plate, for instance, if, if the main template is a Purple Heart template, some of the states would allow to display, like the way we display our stickers on now to the veteran's license plate, if they do have an appropriate, appropriate symbol or sticker to the awards, the valor, you have the Silver Star, the Bronze Star, Distinguished Service, and of course, the Medal of Honor. And if they do have a, do have a sticker, some of the states allow application of that specific award to a Purple Heart license plate, because the fact that, as I mentioned, we are an organization. But then for an individual with a Silver Star or a Bronze Star, mind you, it'll be given an opportunity to, to display, if in fact they're recipient of both of the awards also, conveniently, it's more, it's, it's another consideration to, that might come into the Purple Heart, a decision that might come into play with the Purple Heart license plate. And again, Mr. Francisco has showed a number of state license plate, and reading to the, to the different states requirements or law into it, they do allow to apply a sticker.
Okay. Thank you. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I want to thank the, the author and the co-authors for introducing this measure. I'm here to, to fully participate in this process and, and to learn from, from all of you and the recommendations that have been provided here. And again, I've just been trying to research the other jurisdictions and seeing what they have done, and I thank you all for, for the initiative being made here to, to, to help this committee proceed in implementing this, this program. I, Mr. Chair, I, I, if I could ask real quick, I mean, I'm not sure if, how this would be implemented, I mean, if, once this, all variables are in place and the sign, all enacted, how, how is this implied, as far as the action being made at Revon Tax? I mean, I know it's just, will be similar to the other processes up at Revon Tax?
Yeah. So actually, there's been discussion going on with Revon Tax, with the, the division there that deals with license plate. So, so this is, this doesn't, this won't come as a surprise to them. In fact, they have, they've had discussions with the manufacturer for the template, they've got some pricings. So we're much further along than, than, you know, just, just talking about it here tonight. So once the appropriation is made, then Revon Tax can go and place the order for the master template to be able to produce the plates themselves. So there's already some groundwork being laid for that, and, and the committee is shooting to get this out well before forthcoming Veterans Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for sharing that information with me and the organization here. I also thank Tom for sharing the medal, actually, that I, I've been in front of many of you, but this is the first time I've ever had the medal right in front of me. So I thank you for that opportunity. Thank you all for your, your sacrifices.
And I think certainly Senator Morrison should be added on as a co-sponsor to the bill, and we'll do that when we get it on the floor. So there being no other questions, unless you have any closing comments, we'll consider then Bill 334 as having been duly heard, and we will... I gotta go through the script. And this public hearing is now adjourned? Yes, sir?
I didn't get the opportunity and to convey my appreciation for your effort and all that you all have put into this bill. And having heard the panel, the committee, express their concern of our issue, and especially the members being here. On behalf of the members, I personally would like to thank each and every one of you for your interest in this matter. Thank you.
All right. Great. And so with that, it's now 7:20, and this hearing is adjourned.